I don't see the two outside. The many people who are in this office. They're down in the room right there.
That's right there.
Yes, I can explain that. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, my department. I was right here. I was surprised by concert. It's one of them. My city, you know, just chill. It's all good. Yeah. You want to play? No. I didn't.
All right, hello, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Mayor Orr. Today is Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five at six thirty. And call this meeting to order. We're going to start with our swearing in.
Stand on the other side.
Grace Harbor County Senator Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. This guy?
Yeah.
And push the hand, push this part down inside.
All right. So if you could, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carrie Hubbard.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Aberdeen Council Ward Four.
Aberdeen Council Ward Four.
Position seven.
Position seven.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, Carrie Hubbard. Yes. All right. Let's get Deputy Clerk Louise to give the roll call later.
Allen. Ellis.
Yes.
Ramsey.
There.
Bacon.
Here.
Hodgkin.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Lawrence.
There.
Mackey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Cercini.
Here.
Fredo.
Here.
Orr.
Here.
Oh, did you say Orr first or? Her voice is a little deep.
Taylor.
Here.
Orr.
He's here. Bad eyes, bad ears. But it's part of your role. Okay, can we staff with the pledge, believe him? Hi.
I'm calling the United States of America. And to every public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And that's Council President Orr is not here right now. So in her absence, I'll take a motion from somebody to elect me inter. Pro Tim President.
I nominate Councilperson Ramsey.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Any other nominations?
I nominate. I nominate Casey Morrison.
Second.
Okay. You want to do this, a roll call vote or? Okay.
Please state the name of the council member you're voting for. Ellis. Ramsey. Ramsey.
Ramsey.
Bacon.
Morrison.
Hodgkin.
Morrison.
Hubbard. Morrison. Lawrence.
Morrison.
Mackey.
Ramsey.
Morrison. Morrison. Cercini. I'm sorry. Um, Ramsey. Fredo.
Ramsey.
Taylor.
Morrison.
Morrison wins six to five.
Okay, thank you. As now we can go move on to the approval of the minute with the Council Pro Tim, Casey Morris.
I love my approach tonight's agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, so we have presentation now with, uh, let's see, Blake Refund Bureau with Robin Zimmerman. Hello. And friends.
And friends. Robinson, Robinson, Marina Richardson and Sharon Fogo. And we have Tammy Baird on Zoom.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Sharon Fogo. I'm the Blake Implementation Manager at the Administrative Office of the Courts. Um, the Blake decision was a decision by the Washington State Supreme Court in February of twenty twenty one. Um, finding that the unlawful possession of a controlled substance was unconstitutional from nineteen seventy one until twenty twenty one. So our business of the Blake Refund Bureau is getting individuals that have had, sorry, that have had a conviction of that sort of unlawful possession of a controlled substance, their money back that they paid into the courts for legal financial obligations. Or if they've had, um, exceptional expansion expenses such as bail money or paying for electronic monitoring or, um, paying out of pocket for treatment. Those are also what our business is. So we have Marina here who, um, and we have a PowerPoint up. So if the, if you had a past drug conviction, um, you are qualified for, if it was just a simple possession, not like delivery or intent to deliver. But if you had a simple possession, that would be considered a Blake case. So the Blake vacates have to be happening first, and then you might be eligible for a refund. So it's a three step process that Marina is going to cover.
So I've been fortunate enough to work within this community for probably fifteen years, for about a total of twenty years within social service agencies. And so it was my stomping ground, so to speak, when I, uh, left Grace Harbor County, uh, in a position where I worked with the therapeutic courts. So I was very familiar with working with folks who were justice system involved and then also just a system involved in various ways. So it was my inclination when I took this position with the state to partner with Aberdeen or within the Grace Harbor County because it was familiar for me. And we've been able to partner with a local resource with the More Right Group. Uh, and they've been fantastic in welcoming us and we've been able to work with a lot of, uh, community, um, agencies who serve the community in various ways. And some of those, uh, folks qualify for refunds. Um, I find that it's very helpful to connect to the folks that may need the income the most. If they were gracious enough to pay their court fines, that, you know, they should receive it back as soon as possible in ways that could be helpful for them. So the More Right Group has been really excellent and providing a space for us. We've come down several times and worked with various agencies and then did face to face with clients or people who we call Blake impacted individuals. Right? So we help them with connecting them to, uh, um, legal services to, uh, vacate their cases as well as then connecting them with what is the refund process. And so the first step is to get your case vacated. Um, to have something vacated, in this case, they use the term vacate. It means to get it off your record. So it impacts a lot of different types of things. Uh, you know, you, you may hear of some people being, uh, like resentenced and things like that because it does affect people's criminal histories. Um, something that is a very positive impact is having something like this off your record so that housing may not be an issue or being cleared to be, say, a suitable person to work in a daycare or to babysit or to adopt somebody. Those are really extreme circumstances, but they are circumstances that impact people. Right? So to be, uh, or two, nope, that's fine. Um, so the first step, Tammy is going to talk more about the legal stuff because I am not an attorney. Um, so the next step is we have the Blake Refund Bureau. So that's myself and Sharon, um, and quite a few other people, but we are kind of the face. We answer the phone and we answer the emails and we connect with the people that may be working through this process. So lots of phone calls, um, to just assist people with, uh, meeting them where they're at and how they can apply to get any money that may be owed back to them for money they have paid into the court system. Um, and what we have really found is it's a very cathartic process for people that they may have been, uh, you know, this was a traumatic part of their time, part of their life. This goes way, way back, you know? So we get people calling in there in their sixties, seventies, and they're remembering this time where it was very impactful for them to have something like a possession charge on their record and it, um, so we really serve a wide range of, uh, of people. So, um, to apply for your Blake refund, uh, if you are owed one, you can do it online. I'm pointing at you because the hyperlink is right behind you. Sorry, David. Um, if you go like this, you could be Vanna, the court's link. You can do it online or you can call us and we can walk you through how to apply with a paper application. Um, so that's step two, after you get your case vacated. And the third step is to verify whether or not you may have what we call third party reimbursements. This may be things that the court told you that you needed to do because you had a simple possession charge. Say you had a simple possession charge and they told you you needed to, um, have electronic monitoring or if you paid for, uh, out of pocket for treatment costs, things like that. Or if you paid bail, you may also be eligible to have that money returned to you. Um, so this is the full spectrum. This is felony cases as well as, uh, uh, lower court cases. Um, you may be owed money back from any of those cases that you may have had. So we also connect people to legal aid partners such as living with conviction, civil survival. Um, the way to justice can also help with any of these things. You know, everybody's, uh, journey through the justice system is unique and that creates sometimes very unique situations. So our legal aid partners have really been fantastic. Um, so this is a, an example of our Blake outreach in Aberdeen. We've, like I said before, the More Right Group has simply been fantastic. Um, we've also been able to connect with several, uh, courts here because part of this is also the legal work of uploading the cases and getting the cases vacated. Um, am I talking too long?
No, no, no.
Okay. So, um, we've been, yeah, we've made quite a few partnerships in this process. Uh, and our next court that, should I introduce the, is Grace Harbor District Court has agreed to, uh, allow us to come in and assist them with Tammy's team. So I'm going to hand it over.
Hi, everybody. So, oh, yes, and I run, I steer all outreach for the Blake Refund Bureau for all thirty nine counties across Washington state. And so finding these individuals, there's about three hundred fifty thousand, estimated three hundred fifty thousand impacted, um, individuals from two thousand twenty one back to nineteen seventy one by this ruling. So trying to find those individuals, all right? I mean, you could consider nineteen seventy one, right? They move away. So it's not just Washingtonians anymore, although the convictions happen in Washington across the nation, international. And so in our portal, we have, we, um, we do a lot, you know, we have different areas to check for, for that. And so we, but we still define them and everybody digests media differently. And whether, you know, even if we're getting in the newspapers and we got coverage in the Daily World here, um, we had Seattle Times. We've had a lot of media coverage about this, uh, I mean, because it's very kind of hot button item with legislature. Um, but still, I mean, there's so many individuals that, I mean, don't get the news, right? Might not have a smartphone. And so we've been going across the state, um, and hitting recovery centers. Um, I've been doing, um, prison visits, um, the incarcerated population. And Aberdeen has been absolutely incredible, probably the most incredible as far as partnership and collaboration. So I wanted to thank the community first of all for that. On the More Right Group, um, we've been there. We started in January and we did a pop up and we had so many individuals there. Um, we didn't even take a lunch break. We're there for five hours and then invite us back the next month and the month after. And, um, and just it was word of mouth. People were on their cell phone, I mean, people that had been in, um, the ten city as, you know, one individual called it, um, got on his cell phone, brought in the community and almost everybody that came in was impacted. So, um, we want to keep doing this work, um, like Marina touched on, uh, we, Grace Harbor, that court is going to opt in. And so we're working, I'm working with Judge Valentine, um, to do so and trying to get the way out in this community more and more. Because there's still, I mean, we haven't even touched upon the amount of individuals that could be qualified for this. And, and we have, and at the end of this, you'll have my, um, my email will be up there. So if you have any questions, if there's any partners that you think that would be great to collaborate with, please let me know. And we have trifles, we have postcards we can hand out. And so, um, and again, the resource, we have a lot of, of the legal aid groups such as living with conviction, civil survival, way of justice that we work with to help get the convictions, get the vacates and work with incarcerated population and resentencings. Um, and then we are really kind of the last part of it. At this, I mean, the refund bureau is as far as the, um, the refunds. But now we've added a second arm. It's called the Blake Administrative Vacate Unit. And we have Tammy Baird here and Simon, I don't know if I heard it wrong, Wesley. I don't want to butcher your last name, but I'm glad to see you both on this. And so they.
Thank you.
So they are now steering the Blake Administrative Vacate Unit, which supports courts such as Grace Harbor with completing their Blake work. So I will turn it over and there's actually a pause of this in case anybody grabs it or I'll have business cards at the end and back. Um, and I'll turn it over to Tammy and Simon.
First of all, Grace Harbor County, thank you for having us, Aberdeen. We really appreciate being here. Simon will be presenting on behalf of our unit.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, so the Blake Refund Bureau, as you've heard, uh, is helping to get the money that people are owed back to them. What? What Tammy and I are working on is identifying the thousands, hundreds, tens of thousands, depending on the jurisdiction, the cases that actually need to be vacated, where the person is entitled to have their case vacated. And our process is designed to help the courts across the state identify those people, attempt to contact them and prepare the paperwork necessary for their case to be processed. In a normal legal case, the actual defendant has to come forward and request something from the court, that their case be vacated. But here, because all these people are entitled to it, we are moving forward with the courts, basically, it's called motion of the court, when the court says, I am vacating this case on behalf of justice. So we just help the court identify the people and then they don't need to appear. So it's a bit different from the refund bureau. We don't need to actually be able to find the people. We're just helping get the cases off their records. And then once we've done that, then those people become eligible to receive their refunds if they find out that this has happened for them. Is there anything that I'm missing on that, Tammy?
Nope. Simon, you covered it. Just want to tell you that we have, we are in process now with another court. Edmonds Municipal Court is using the Blake Administrative Vacate Unit to clear about 840 cases that they have, that they could never do on their own. Some of the comments that was made by Judge Weiss at the Edmonds Court was that if the court had to do this on their own, they would have never been able to get the work done without the help. Also, he felt very strongly that if the, if the legislature had not funded this, it would have bankrupt the city, giving the money back. And so that's an important piece of what we're trying to do is to get this work done so that the funds are still available for the jurisdictions to use to repay the money. So if anyone has any questions, please feel free. Yes, ma'am.
Any idea of how many cases qualify for this program with the Aberdeen court system?
No, the, the, the simple answer is no, because I haven't run a report for Aberdeen yet. We're working, we will be working with Grace Harbor District Court, working to vacate their cases. And courts are always surprised. Like I said, Edmonds Municipal had about 840. We're working with another court, another municipal court. They have over 1,100. I've seen thousands in one, in one court, so it can range.
That's a really good question and I wish I would have thought to have looked at that information before we came. I did run a preliminary list two years ago, which really shouldn't have changed much since the law had gone into effect after that. But I can certainly email you with that information when I get back to the office and look it up.
It's, it sounds like there's no, there's no, what's it called, when the clock runs out?
Currently, it's funded year to year by the legislature.
And when that money runs out, then would the city be hit with a big bill?
Absolutely. And the other thing is, is that the state currently pays municipalities and counties for the exceptional expenses that it costs for the courts to do this work. So that's why we're trying to encourage all of the municipal courts especially because we know that the cities really can't fund this on their own. We're really encouraging them to join the vacate unit, have that done administratively so they don't even have to, they will have to do some of the work, but they certainly don't do as much as they would have to do if the vacate unit wasn't available.
For folks who are entitled to get some money back, do you have a sense of what the average amount?
Yes, actually I do. The average amount based on the two years that we've been up and running is about $1,000. That's our vacate team, yes. Tammy and Simon, I'll leave that to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear. Could you repeat that question, Sharon?
The question was about the bulk volume of getting the cases done.
Yeah, well, will they, will everybody who's vacated, will they receive that letter letting them know that they, that the case has been vacated?
So what we do is we take every measure that's available to us to look for their contact information, to send them that letter. And then, you know, the hit rate is up in the air because some of the cases are very old and some of the address information is not up to date, but we do our best.
I have a question. So the, the purpose of, of this Blake Fund is to help people be able to get back in the workforce, it sounds like, to get those, the things that's punched off their record to get back in the workforce. Is, is so once that is off, is there any knowing whether or not that person is still impacted by a drug habit where the employer wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be any way of them knowing?
That's hard to say because, yes, of course, there may be still inactive addiction. But it does give a leg up for those who are functioning and looking for employment or looking for housing. And so we'd rather have them have that ability than to take it away just because they're still an addict. So.
I would also note that since this law was found to be unconstitutional by Blake, the legislature replaced it with a new law. So drug possession is still illegal in Washington. And if these people don't have any other cases on their records, then that means that they've been out of trouble for at least four years.
Thank you.
I do appreciate it. And I've left materials with Becca in case. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us and allowing us to present to you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll open up to quick comments and please keep your comments to three minutes and start with your name and your ward or address, please.
I need to push that in.
Are you?
Okay. My name is Ruth Hamilton. I live in Hoquiem. But I'm affiliated with History 98520 in Aberdeen. And I recently had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Orr and Councilmember Ellis and a representative from the Washington State Historical Society, which is partnering with America's 250th celebrations. And so I provided you with a flyer that describes the kickoff for that program and it's called Two Lights for Tomorrow. And it's commemorating Paul Revere's ride. And the, the plan is for individuals, businesses, schools, civic entities to put two lights in the window on April 18th to represent the, the Two-Size by Sea from Ron Fellows poem. And I thought just as an aside, I'd let you know that there were, there were more rides and more riders than just Paul Revere and his two buddies. One of them was a black man who is said to be the first elected African-American official in the United States. And also, one was a 16-year-old girl who rode twice as far as Paul Revere. And all of these individuals are just examples of bravery and commitment that I think we can all aspire to. But I also wanted to let you know that we have a connection in Aberdeen in our museum collection to Paul Revere. The copper tub from our old steam pumper, old tiger, was made in Paul Revere's foundry. And so we have a physical connection to Paul Revere's foundry. So I thought that was cool. Anyway, any organization is eligible to join the Washington Program for America 250. And the details on how to do that are listed in the handout. And if you join, you can get window clings for your business and you can be named on the website. And so you get some, some good marketing benefit from that. So just wanted to let you know that and encourage you to keep thinking about history. We'll be back again and again to encourage you to do that. And just, history is part of our connection as people and stories. And of course, our organization feels that's crucial to life in America. But keep, stay tuned. You'll be hearing more from us.
Any other? Low there.
Good evening, Council. My name is Darren Bates. I live in Ward 2. I'd like to say thank you to Rick Singer and his crew for coming out and cleaning up a big mess behind Emirates Building or used to be Jeremy's Appliances on East Wishka. Unfortunately, a couple of days after they were there, got a new mess. And then I'd like to thank Ruth Clemmons and Mayor Orr for giving me some time in their busy schedules coming up this month to hear some of my complaints in my area. Thanks, guys.
Well, my name is John Martinson and I'm the third of five generations of family that have lived here in Aberdeen, worked and educated here. And I care very much for Aberdeen. Now, I'm the orange bucket guy that every day is down on Harren Street cleaning up garbage. I want to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department, Public Works Department and everybody here. I want to thank you for everything that you do for our community. I'm strongly in favor of the ordinance that's been put forward by Chief here, Chief Green. And I have, I firsthand am on Harren Street every morning for about the last, well, I'm going to say the last 10 years. And I started off down on the riverfront there by, behind Quigs, on Quigs property, picking up garbage. They have a big camp and cab that down there, the homeless people. Lots of garbage, way behind. Tractors would come in, clean everything up. We'll be back again in a month. I asked a gal down there, I said, you know, I said, honey, I said, why do you hang out here at a big camp? I said, she said, because all my friends are here. I said, I've got an apartment across the river. I'm here because this is where I'm, I'm comfortable with. So, and that's okay. But so what I'm seeing here is that I have about six, seven, eight months ago, you know, we cleaned up everything with the new ordinance that came into play so the police could, could pick things up, get things cleaned up with all the Public Works Department and the Fire Department. I watched the paramedics do what they do. I watched the police officers do what they do. I've watched the Public Works Department do what they do. I even had people crawling underneath my building. They lift the grates up in the alley, crawl underneath my building, trying to break into my building. Public Works came down right away and filled the vent holes with gravel so they couldn't do that. So graffiti everywhere. So I'm very, very in tune to what's going on in Aberdeen and what we're trying to control here. I've seen a huge difference in the last seven months with cleaning up the downstate street area. It looks beautiful. I normally would spend at least an hour, sometimes more, picking up garbage, bucketfuls of garbage. Now, I only pick up maybe, maybe two buckets a week, two, three buckets a week. I got one this morning. So where is I, so this is a huge impact for our community. Our community really looks nice and it's nice to see the buy-in by the local people to fix up their buildings. And I see things starting to come back. When I was, like I say, I was born and raised on Harren Street and I've gone through the 50s and the 60s and the 70s. And I know what this, and John, you've been there too, you've seen it. So we, we know what this community has been and you have to, to, Dave. So I'm here to say that taking pride in our community by cleaning up our community is very, very important to all of us, people that live here, pay taxes here. So I support Chief Green and what he wants to do. I think it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I had the word, I'd give it to you.
I said, thank you. I should have brought my orange bucket with me. I guess I will pick it up. Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Hi, Gail Anderson from All the Glitters. I claim Ward 5. I just had a couple of comments. Not complaints, comments. I agree, there's a lot, too many lights around and people don't pay attention to them anyway. I've been almost hit in the crosswalk four times on Harren and Broadway and then another two times down on Harren, the next block down. And also, three times, four times crossing at the Senior Center in Art Guild. People aren't paying attention. They're making right or left turns and they don't see me. And I'm not talking 10 feet. I'm talking about I could reach out and slap them. Okay, so, anyway, it's just a comment. The other comment is about Sunday Market. It has been an event for many years and it is a plus for the retail businesses down on Harren and the, also the restaurants. And I have talked to them all. And it has plenty of parking and electricity. Many people stop there on their way through town as they're leaving. And also, as well as people after church and people that live downtown, it's very convenient. I say if you want to start a Saturday market down the street, go for it. Make congestion, bother people, but don't kill the Sunday market. That benefits many people and businesses that, on Harren and Broadway. Bye.
Thank you, Gail. Any other?
I just had to follow up the Deb's question and we've done half 2,812 cases out of Aberdeen Municipal.
That was Liz's question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Liz's question. 2,812. 812.
2,812.
And that's high overview, so it may be less, it may be a little more.
Cases that could be reimbursed.
Or cases that need to be vacated. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you. That will move on to our president, Tam, Casey Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion to perflight consent agenda that includes minutes from the March 26, 2025 meeting as well as accounts payable and payroll, including check numbers 26 to 21 through 26 to 22, 89183 through 89325, N wires 1848 through 1849 and 1852 through 1856.
There's been motion in the second to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All paper? One carries. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to the mayor's report, if I can find it here. Right. I recorded this in the tape the other day and I don't know if everybody gets the paper. So I'm just, I didn't quote it exactly, but. I recorded this in the tape the other day and I don't know if everybody gets the paper. So I'm just, I didn't quote it exactly, but Aberdeenian Isaac Garcia and Henry Nelson together broke the meet records at the Ray Ryan Memorial Grace Harbor County Championship meet that took place at Miller Junior High. Garcia won three events and broke two meet records. He leapt in the long jump 21.1 feet, broke a record that was set in 1999 of 22 feet. He also ran 49.9 seconds in the 400 meter. He beat out a 2018 record of 50.84 seconds set by Brian Seedorf. I don't know if he is related to, hope he was related. Okay. And then not to be outdone, Henry Nelson one upped himself with 1.56.91 time in the 800 race. He beat out a record that he set himself the previous season. So congratulations to both those guys sent to Aberdeen High School. All right. That's all I have for my report. Are there any council? Hold on to my, okay, yeah, council reports. Okay, hold on. Go ahead. Yeah, first of all.
Thank you. The report from the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport Authority. The lady Washington is in Dry Dock in Port Townsend. And she's getting some much needed work done to get her back in the water so that she can hopefully be out sailing the seas again and visiting many ports of call in Washington State and elsewhere. This is expensive work and the seaport's calling for donations. And people can visit the seaport website to help support her restoration. She's the state's official flagship. And she was built here in Grace Harbor. A lot of people have ties to her to building her and getting her launched. And it would be lovely to see her back in our home port looking resplendent.
Yeah. Any other council reports?
I can say that the property attorney I was not selected to be a juror. It's still a process. I will say that last week before, I think me and another local claimed that the west end of the East Aberdeen Northway, we removed five bags of garbage weighing about 80, 90 pounds and 12 pounds of recycling. It was mostly glass bottles and horse engines. I want to say thank you for, to Kevin for noticing me cleaning up and volunteering to clean up the area just on the spot. And thanks for public works and down in the middle for moving garbage. I'm glad I'm cleaning up. It hadn't been 7/11 in some. There has been an issue with people, what looks to be people taking garbage out of the 7/11 dumpster and sorting through it and just leaving it on the creek side. I can say to 7/11's credit, credit, it's time they actually cleaned it up. Leave on Monday and then the next day there's already bags of garbage strewn apart. So I'm going to go there and finish up. I just, it's continually being re-trashed. There needs to be something done to prevent the garbage from.
Do they have a lock on their dumpster?
It looked like it this time, but they can be broken pretty quickly. So I think they just need a cabinet. You know, just what people are doing.
Thank you.
For public safety. Officer Lindsay Proz was sworn in March 17th and started the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission's Basic Law Enforcement, April 1st. She will graduate on August 6th and will then have a 12-week field training program. So we're real excited for that. And testing is still ongoing to establish lists for one vacant police officer and one vacant police services officer position. One records specialist starts April 21st and the second position is on hold due to vegetarian concerns. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I don't have a committee report, but I just wanted to comment out the back of Council of Representatives' report. Coming from the property owner again on the other side of the 7/11. And it really is becoming, and it's been an issue, but it's not getting any better. I won't say to 7/11's credit. They do seem to be more responsive now. But I don't know if, as a city, we can like have a meeting with them or do something to be more proactive and trying to keep this from occurring because it's affecting that whole, that whole block. As Councilmember Francie can attest, he's constantly back there cleaning.
Thank you. Any other council folks? No. Okay, then we'll move on to our student rep, but he's not here today. So we'll skip that and move on to Administrator Clemmons' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one moment while I hold my chairman's screen here. If you recall, in the budget this year, 2025's budget is what is considered a performance budget. So there was an appendix attached to the budget that had performance measures that align with the city councils goals that we create, that were created in the strategic planning session from 2024. So I, each quarter, I committed to giving all of you an update on how we're doing and how we are meeting those goals. So that's my presentation for that is my presentation. Because that's the presentation I'm writing. So just a reminder of what the city's mission is, is to serve with transparency and integrity, provide dependable services and public safety to honor our history and be stewards of our natural, cultural and economic resources. And at this last session workshop, strategic planning workshop in January, the council came up with a vision as the metropolitan hub for the coastal region. Aberdeen is a happy, safe, healthy, thriving community with clean air and beautiful spaces where people want to live, work, play and visit. Again, that's the vision for the city, a long-term goal that we're always striving to reach. So there were six areas of focus that we were able to glean from the five goals air goal areas that all of you had assigned staff and I to, to create, to, to, to make, to build our workaround. So those are those areas here. Workforce engagement and development, vibrant, safe and healthy community, fiscal responsibility, economic development, infrastructure investment, communication and outreach. So some important notes about the metrics that I'll be presenting. We were able to cover 58 of the 79 metrics that were presented. So 73% of those are presented today. Most are measured on an annual basis or use the ones that we weren't able to get that remaining like 27% that we weren't able to reach those. That's because those are like annual measurements. For instance, like they're dependent on survey results or they're like dependent on clean, like another example is like clean quarterly annual audit. So the ones that we were able to get, we were able to measure for the quarter. So when it comes to workforce engagement and outreach, the three areas, the two areas focus are collaboration and professional development. Here are some measurements that we were able to pull from those training hours, 10 hours per month per firefighter. And the outcome so far is 5.8. Our fire chief had explained that it's difficult to get 10 hours a month with the number of calls. I just recently learned that we average about 6,400 calls per year. And so some of those calls lasting several hours and with the ship, ship work. So we will continue to try and reach 10 hours per month, but for the first quarter, we're averaging about 5.8. Turnout time to dispatch, the goal is 80 seconds. That's kind of an industry standard that all firefighters are trying to reach. And at this point, in order to get our guys out, we're at about 2 minutes and 31 seconds is what we're averaging. Again, we will, we continue to work to reach that 80 second turnout time. Vibrant, safe and healthy communities. These were the four areas that we were focused on. Economic development, neighborhood connections, public safety and revitalization. Economic development, our firefighters or, excuse me, our fire marshal's goal is 300 business inspections per year so far this year because it's early and they said that during this time of the year, it is their slowest time. He has reached about 10 inspections so far. It will pick up in the summer. Neighborhood connections, increase the number of residents served through parks and recreation. Excuse me. Our men's league, the team numbers remain the same. Women's and, women's and coed leagues have increased about 50%. The participation of women has increased over 50% in some sports. So that's a really positive step in the right direction with active people, more active people in the community, more active women in the community. And surprisingly, our cornhole league, it has seen an increase as well, so much so that they've added a new division. And it's just been its second season. So we're seeing an increase in activity. So that's how we're meeting that measurement. For public safety, police chief identified increasing DUI and drug enforcement. Drug arrests are up 38% the last six months. DUI patrols start next week. And for those of you who aren't aware, we were able to get a DUI position fully funded by the state for the next three years, which will save the city money. And so that's, that's good. We're headed in the right direction. For those of you who don't know as well, that Officer Mitchell is, was I, I think he was ranked second or he was number one, but I think, I think he's ranked second in the state for the number of DUI arrests for officers. So that's, I think that was a contributor to how we got the rank. Also from public safety, public safety community section satisfaction above 60%. That's one of those things we'll, we'll reach out to the community to get better numbers. But at this point on Facebook, on the police Facebook page, which by the way, they have 14,000 followers. That's, that's pretty incredible for me. I'm shocked about that. But they have a 74% favorable rating on Facebook. Revitalization increase, the ratio, excuse me, it should be ratio, not ration, of tree plantings to tree removals each year. We're doing, we're exceeding that goal, 20 to one ratio of blue planted. Director Barnum with the help of the Grace Harbor Conservation District. Thank you very much. They planted 100 trees and vegetation at Selasko Park. When it comes to fiscal responsibility, this is, these are the four areas that are identified that we wanted to reach goals. For accounts payable, our goal was 95% accuracy. We are meeting that goal as well as time sheets. We actually are probably exceeding with time sheets, but finance being numbers people, they didn't want to give me 100%. So they said 99.9%. So accounts payable paid within 30 days. This is why these, these metrics are really good. It gives us time to examine where we're not meeting our goals. And we found that accounts payable is not, are not being, in some cases, are not being paid within 30 days, whether it's grants or different things that are kind of holding up that process. So this gives us an opportunity to like look over and make sure how can we improve the process? So that's something that we're currently doing with our team. Utility bill, customer payment compliance, 90%. We are, we are meeting that goal. Process and issue all new and renewed business licenses. We don't have any new business info yet that they have to go typically through the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue was renewing their system. So now their system is backed up as of April 1, I believe. And so we should have that in the second quarter, that information for you in the second quarter. Renewals, we build 176 folks and we received 103 payments. So we're at about 58%. Quarterly tax compliant, we are at 91% compliance, 2,200 letters sent out and only 190 letters we've had to send delinquent letters to. Employee health and wellness, achieved AWC's well award and 2% insurance premium discount. Our goal has been met for the year. And when it comes to strengthening our finances, increase the number of grant applications. You've seen these already that come past you that come, come to you for approval. $17,000 for Grace Harbor Community Foundation for the new soccer goals. $30,000 for new trees and Parks Department has also submitted two more grant requests. Process EMS billing within three weeks. We are meeting that goal at three weeks. Financial policies developed and implemented and that is in process. When it comes to economic development, we wanted to know how well are we supporting our businesses and any development in the city? And that's through the things that we do. Percentage nuisance abatements closed, 90%. We closed about 55 this last quarter, so we're about 73%. We'll still keep working towards that goal as we close more and more through the year. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll reach that 90%. Increase the number of cases resolved, closed than previous year. We're at again 73%. Contact made with all nuisance abatement property owners, 100%. We are meeting that goal. Completion of all inspections, 100% completion of all engineering inspections. Our, we hopefully will have more comparables to work with, but at this, because we've not been really collecting data, it's building inspections, 578 inspections have been conducted in the last three months. 40 rental inspections and 278 electrical inspections. Our team are very, very busy. Measurement is, another measurement is the permits being building, electrical and fire permits processed under 30 days. We issued 374 permits and 24 are ready for payment. Process between 30 and 90 days, we issued 13. We have issues where, we have situations where the applicant has delayed the process, whether they, you know, need to, need to come back with different reviews or something like that. So excuse me, they have to come back with something else to kind of add to the process. So these are the numbers here and two are ready for payment. Infrastructure, we got a lot here. There were two areas here, better understanding of public works, infrastructure, investing in, replacing and repairing street-related infrastructure. Public Works team is doing a really good job. There's about three pages here worth of, they are absolutely meeting goals. Catch basins inspected, 50%, total goal in progress, 17% of the goal has been met. That's 310 inspections that they've been able to conduct in the last three months. 310 inspections, 281 of those catch basins clean and 29 inspections marked as satisfactory. We have, the next round of inspections will be conducted in April. That's for the outfalls, inspection and maintenance. And then illicit discharge, detection and elimination, 100%. We're absolutely meeting that goal. And then hydrants being flushed, we want to meet 100% of that goal. That will begin in May. Valves exercise, we want 100%. So far we're at 30% complete, which is right on target. Actually exceeding target. And then update the sewer system on GIS. We're still awaiting the results. We'll begin the camera work, but we're aiming for 100% accuracy when it comes to collecting that data. Compliance with MPDES, discharge permit during normal average flow. This is all great to me. Rick could probably explain that, but we are meeting that goal as well as the next one, the discharge permit during high average flow. We're meeting that goal as well, 98% compliance. Investing in, replacing or repairing street-related infrastructure. Our street sweeper has been down. So that's the one I want you guys to be aware of and so, you know, we're not meeting that goal right now. It's been inoperable for the last few months and it's currently being repaired. That's issues that we've just had ongoing. Be prepared, I might come to you and ask for a new. Um be prepared, I might come to you and ask for a new street sweeper here in the next few months if we can't really get this one back in. Um you know, we can't get this one back online. Um small mainline replacements, seven hundred and fifty, fifty lineal feet, a pipe replaced, four hundred and, four hundred lineal feet have been replaced so far this year. Um water leaks repaired, one hundred percent repaired within twenty four hours. Hydrants replaced, our goal was fifteen. We've replaced four already this year. And hydrant vegetation, one hundred percent of all. Um we'll start in May when we, we start cutting back a lot of the vegetation. Uh this is continued. Uh we'll start uh domestic, domestic water mainline on uh vegetation maintenance again in May. Um valves replaced, we've replaced eight. Our goal is twenty five. We're meeting the goal with sewer line main blockages. Um broker sewer line repair, we're meeting that goal. Uh two hundred lineal feet. We'll start in the summer with some of these, you know, uh some of these projects like um replacing sewer lines. Um that is something we want, is is better done in drier weather. Communication and outreach. Um you wanted an increase of Facebook posts on city business by fifty percent. So far, we have done that. We've been using our city's Facebook page as well as the police page and we've had six posts so far. Last year, we had twenty five, so I think we're, we're uh ahead of the game this year. Again, police department, fourteen thousand followers. Um citizen action requests, that's when, and that's when cut, excuse me, residents will uh go online and submit, you know, pothole requests or something that, something's happening in their neighborhoods. Um and so we want to be able to follow up with them within the first five days. We're exceeding that and we're no longer doing letters. We're contacting them by email or by phone within three days. Um we're meeting the goal of documenting and logging those things and then public records requests um for non-police. We just for the three months, uh for the first quarter, we've had sixty processed and fifty of those are, have been closed already. Um increase the total maintenance labor hours invested in the park system using volunteers or different partnerships. So far, a hundred and twenty hours in the last three months. Oh, and we've already had, and that's between three different groups and different projects. And increase the number of requests for business donations or sponsors, sponsored sponsorships. As our sponsorships have increased by twelve new businesses, so Stacy is really working hard. And the number of, uh increase the number of festivals and events held in Aberdeen. Uh we do have some new events uh before, in front of you, you should have a sheet provided by the Downtown Aberdeen Association of all the new events, of all the events that are held in Aberdeen and there are quite a few that um have been logged on there. So there's events that are ongoing throughout the year. There are new events that happen during certain times of the year and then there's some potential events at the bottom. Um a best practices for hosting events workshop, that, that'll be on April twenty sixth. Uh International Aberdeen Cleanup Day is June twentieth. That's the day before um the uh World Music Day, which is important to have a clean city before we receive thousands of people to come uh visit our city. And um we have new experiences in town, so we need more time. One of the things that were measured is that we didn't have a lot of things for people to do. Um they, we need to average like two to four hours of, of things for visitors to do. So um contributing to that is the unplugged in the green rooms and Nirvana experience downtown. So just some reminders, because this is my report. Um we do have the Economic Development Strategy Workshop next Wednesday at six thirty here uh in this room. Um and online right now is the survey on homelessness, which closes on April thirtieth. If you haven't already taken it or if you haven't already like spread the word, that would be appreciated. The one on, that we're offering online is for residents. Uh we do have a separate uh uh, we do have a separate survey for business, business owners, people who work in Aberdeen. And then um as a reminder, if I would like to speak to each of you, if you can send me an email about which day or what school works for you for your town hall meetings. Um I've been working with the school district on that and we'd like to get uh some days um tied down. So May and June, they would like to do it while school is in session. I believe school gets out like June eleventh. So anytime before then, uh wards one and two, I have you group together uh and to be meeting at Stevens Elementary, I think, is, is what I've heard. Wards three and four, you have the option of Robert Curry McDermott or High School. I'm getting the sense it's the high school. So wards five and six, I just need to hear from you if you would like to host it at AJ West or Hopkins. So. Are there any questions on my report?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I want to thank you for compiling and presenting that. That was incredible. And I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to staff. Um seeing in front of us all these goals that you guys are just crushing is, is pretty amazing. So thank you. And then I was wondering if you could email a copy of the slide deck to council.
Yes.
Thank you.
Will do. And thank you for the kind words. Yes, I, I really cannot tell you enough how hard uh staff worked to make this city run. If it's, you know, we're out of sight, out of mind. If we're doing it right, you won't ever see us around town and you'll just enjoy your water. You'll, your toilets will flush and your streets will be cleared and you'll never see us. Um so yeah, our, our staff worked very, very hard. So thank you for your support.
Well, thank you. Um are there any directors that would like to give a report? That might have gone to get moved over there, right? Director Sam German. All right, then, then let's move on to uh our public safety report by uh council chair or by chairperson.
So we have public hearing, Bill twenty five dash zero four and ordinance expanding the areas prohibiting sitting, lying or laying on a public sidewalk as set forth in AMC twelve dot forty one dot zero one zeros. And I'd like to open the public hearing.
Hearing discussion. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
I'm ready.
Oppose? Right, we're now public hearing. Anybody like to make a comment on, on the, the ordinance? Uh from the audience here, welcome to come up and make a comment.
Yes, John Martinson again. I'm um one hundred percent uh, um I'm in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes. Right, I'll pay the version, we close public hearing.
No, that we closed. Take a rain. Side up it.
All in favor?
I am.
The hearing is now closed.
And next we have ordinance, the second reading of Bill twenty five dash zero four. An ordinance expanding the areas prohibiting sitting or lying on a public sidewalk as set forth in AMC twelve dot forty one dot zero one zero. And I move that we accept this ordinance. Second.
Is there any discussion? Being done. So there's been a first and a second on the, the second reading of Bill twenty five dash oh four and ordinance expanding the areas prohibiting sitting or lying on a public sidewalk. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Um I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, consider the second reading the third and place Bill twenty five dash zero four into a vote for final passage.
Second. Is there any discussion on? All right, all in favor?
This will be a rule call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Potskin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Terjini?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes eleven to zero. This will be ordered six, seven, two, five.
Thank you. And thank you, councilperson, person for that motion. And right, and public works with Chairperson Francie.
Thank you. Um I've been asked to do a reminder that there are five traffic signals that are being moved downtown. Uh after doing a warrant analysis based on the manual of uniform traffic control devices, signals along Market at G, H, I and K as well as first and F have been determined to not be needed and will be replaced with stop signs. Uh informational signs have been posted, the affected signals. And in June, the lights are set to flash. And uh the reminder is that when lights are flashing red, it means can come to a complete stop and flashing yellow lights being perceived with caution. The signals are planned to be covered in September and removed at a later date. And more information can be found at the city's website, uh aberdeenlaw.gov. And the study itself can be found in the current projects within the engineering division. So aberdeenlaw.gov slash thirty seven three slash current dash projects. We have three items on the agenda tonight. Okay, first is a request recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign the application resolution authorization form and the agreement for RCO agreement number eighteen dash two one, two, zero, four for the Fry Creek Restoration Base. I move that we accept this.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of that? I'm sorry.
Uh I just wanted to mention that this was to change signatures to even to not include all people that are on the councilor or mayor anymore. And it's a reduction of the match that we have to make. It's actually the city setting the same.
All in favor of accepting this request?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, our second item is a request recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute task order number two with line landscape architects for the Fry Creek Restoration Phase Three project. I move that we accept this.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh other discussions, uh daylighting, uh considering how to daylight the section of Fry Creek between Simpson and Southern, that's currently a parking lot. Wants to figure out concepts and coverage to the property owners.
Daylight, that means removing the parking lot.
Basically, yes.
Okay.
Uh allowing the daylight to hit the stream that goes.
Did I hear a second? All right, uh there's been a first and a second and all in favor of approving this request?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, it carries.
And our third is a request recommending the city council award the construction contract for the Southern Avenue US one oh one sidewalk improvements project to Rocklands Incorporated, lowest responsive and respond responsible veteran. I mean, let me accept this.
Been a motion in a second to approve this request. Is there any discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here it is, thank you. All right, um go back to public comments. So Perry, anybody with a public comment? And three minutes, please, that start with your name and order, address. Perkins? All right, so we'll move on from that and go to good of the order and I just have one little thing for good of the order. It's like um we're all out in our yards working and, and um please, if you're gonna do any ditch digging, call eight one one and find out if there might be a gas line or electrical something in there you don't want to run into. Uh it can cause thousands of dollars of damage and it's hard to deal with if you do it, so. Right, any other um good of the order?
Right, I've got one. Um so I got a letter from um someone from Aberdeen who's concerned about the lights being, you know, taken out on Market. And you mentioned, Josh, that they would be uncovered in September, correct?
Oh, I think it's June.
In June?
Uh yeah, very.
It's September?
Yeah.
So um will one, you know, at, at that intersection, will one part of it have a stop sign?
Uh I believe that the stop sign will be there as soon as they're covered and deferred to.
Yeah, most of the.
So, so they'll have stop signs, so I can tell them that, you know, not to worry there. They're not just gonna be able to fly through without having to, you know, have a stop sign.
They'll be, they'll be flash.
It'll still be a controlled intersection. It's not becoming a wild west, so it'll be controlled intersection with stops.
Yeah, I can tell them that. I think people stop at a stop sign sometimes when they do the lights.
I think there was also concern that there were gonna be four-way stops the whole way down Market and that's not. There'll, there'll be a couple of four-way stops, but the rest of the way will be two-way stops.
Okay, so just a couple uh four ways and then basically the street entering into Market will have a stop sign.
And, and for anybody that, like I, I'm next to the senior center, so I get a lot of seniors that, yeah, couldn't be about that. And, and I just tell them, you know, when it's pouring down rain and you're standing there at the light, now you can just go, because there's a stop sign.
Yeah.
It'll be a lot better for the seniors.
And they have a right way, because there's a stop sign and it's an intersection. There you go.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go, go ahead.
Um yeah, just a quick comment. If you haven't been down to where Fry, the Fry Creek pump station is, there's like a really lovely pathway there now. Uh I really encourage, it's very beautiful down there, um to check it out and see like the hard work that our, you know, engineers and our public works have been doing to uh beautify that area. It's, it's really lovely.
Walk and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it's very, very beautiful. So um but I just wanted to give you an update on the Levy Project. Um I want to reassure all of you that uh we are working very closely with our um, with legislators. We're working with different associations, the, you know, National League of Cities, the, the and we're, we've reached out to as many people as we can during this time to you, just to see if there is any reconsideration of what's happening with the BRIC program. Um the program right now, as we know it, is paused, is not canceled as it's been reported. Um so they are reviewing it and are, we don't believe that it was the intention to totally cut important programs like this. We think that that's just been kind of the approach that's been taken up until this point. And this is one of those programs that's fallen victim to it, so we're hoping that there is a reconsideration. And um we're doing our best to work with our legislators who can, you know, impact this and maybe turn things around for us. So I will have updates for all of you as I learn them myself. But I want to just reassure you that our, you know, the cities of Hoquim and Aberdeen are very, working very, very hard to get this reversed.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will accept, go ahead.
May I excuse Council President?
Give me a big emotion.
I know, that'd be.
A second.
I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Um do we have to excuse our student representative favors, which is pretty happy to have? Okay, so now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You both have a nice evening. Thank you, you folks have a nice evening.